Folks, we would have been standing outside the big hall. So that's how I sort of viewed all this, but in the, in every, in any event.
We are lost.
We are. Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting of October nineteenth, twenty twenty one at, beginning at six twelve. This meeting is being held pursuant to and in compliance with ordinance number twenty dash A sixteen. An ordinance to ensure the continuity of government during the COVID nineteen disaster. Opportunities for the public to access and participate in the electronic meeting will be posted on the albumoral.org forward slash community forward slash community hyphen calendar when available. Would you call the role, please, man?
Yes, Mr. Bailey.
President.
Mr. Keller.
President in Alamo County.
Ms. Firehawk.
President in Scottsville, Virginia.
Mr. Randolph.
President in Keswick, Virginia.
Mr. Bivins.
President in outer space.
Ms. Muller is not here today, correct?
Correct.
Mr. Claiborne. Is Mr. Claiborne not here?
Absence as well.
Okay, thank you.
Then you, um, are there any other matters not list, are there any matters not listed on the agenda from the public this evening?
No.
And with commissioners, if you'd look on, on your, on your sheets and see we have an item, a consent that agenda item. Is there a motion to, is there a motion to, um, would anyone like to, to pull this item? And if not, is there a motion to move by Mr. Keller? Is it second? Seconded by, by Daniel, by Mr. Bailey. Is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, please, would you call the, would you call the vote on this particular item on the consent agenda item, please?
Yes, Mr. Bivins.
Hi.
Sir Randolph.
Hi.
Ms. Firehawk.
Yes.
Mr. Keller.
Bye.
Mr. Bailey.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Could we go into our fourth, to the fourth item? Uh, the public hearing for C C C P twenty twenty one zero two, the Southern Albemarle Convenience Center. That was interesting, C C P. Could we hear, could we hear from the staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to.
You look like you're in witness protection.
I know, I know. Very sorry. I've got to get, I've got to get Charles to help me with lighting in my office.
I just feel like has somebody snatched you away from us and you're, you're not really allowed to talk?
This is supposedly David Benish, who is the Development Process Manager of for the Community Development Department and Planning, and I will improve on the lighting or my office the next time around. Uh, let me share my screen so I can get the presentation up. Can you see the presentation?
Yes.
Okay, good. So this is a, um, compliance with the comprehensive plan review for the Southern Albemarle Convenience Center as it is C C P twenty twenty one two. Let me begin the presentation by just outlining what a compliance review is and, and what it isn't. Compliance with the comprehensive plan reviews are required by a state code provision fifteen two twenty two thirty two. Uh, you'll often find these reviews referred to as a twenty two thirty two review or a C C P review. Uh, it considers whether the general location, uh, character and extent of a proposed public facility is in substantial accord with the adopted comprehensive plan. It is reviewed by the planning commission and the commission's findings are forwarded to the board of supervisors, but there is no further action required by the board. Um, the commission's action is only related to the consistency of the use to the comprehensive plan and its provisions. Um, it is not necessarily an action or recommendation on whether the facility should be constructed or not. Oops, excuse me. Oh, sorry, my. Everything's malfunctioning today. So this proposal is for the construction of a solid waste convenience center for collection of household waste and recycled materials, and it's to be operated by the Albemarle County uh, Solid Waste Authority. Uh, I've got outlined both in the staff report and the presentation here bullets about the components and scale of activity. I believe the applicant will be touching on this, so I won't go into great detail here, but it is a daily service six days a week. It is for household material collection, uh, not commercial collection. Um, it's collection of trash and recyclable materials. Um, the trash is in thirty two gallon bags or less. And again, I'll leave that to the applicant to provide for further discussion during their, um, their presentation. That is basically the facilities being, uh, services being offered. Um, this is an image from our G I S showing the parcel, um, in sight for the facility, which is tax map one twenty one eighty two A two. Properties owned by Albemarle County and has been owned since the nineteen eighty nine ninety timeframe. It is located on Esmont Road approximately nine hundred feet uh, from its intersection with Route twenty. It's in the Keen Crossroads area and just south of the Keen Post Office. In terms of comprehensive plan and zoning on the property, uh, the property is located uh, within the county's rural areas designated in our comprehensive plan, and therefore it's, uh, recommended for rural use. Uh, it is zoned, uh, rural areas in, uh, our zoning ordinance and, uh, public uses are permitted as a by right use in all zoning districts, including the R A district. Uh, however, when a public facility structure or facility is not explicitly identified on the land use plan or comprehensive plan, then such a compliance review is required, even though it is a by right use. That is the circumstance, uh, here. Uh, the property is also located within the E C overlay district, the entrance quarter overlay district, or at least a portion of the property. Um, a portion of the property falls within the, the district. Um, this is about a seven acre site and less than half of it falls within the district. Um, there is no proposed development, um, of the overlay district portion of this site, so it actually, the development itself on the property falls outside the E C district. The proposed maintenance of the wooded area on the east side and northeast and north side of the site would limit visibility from the entrance quarter, however. Um, in, in any case. Property is also located, um, within the Southwest Mountain Historic District and National Register Historic District. Um, it should be noted that vacant parcels are not actually included on the National Register inventory, but vacant parcels are listed in the county database as contributing to the rural character of this district because of its undeveloped nature. The Historic Resources Planner, uh, has reviewed, uh, early on this proposal and recommended the maintenance of the wooded area around the developed site, um, developed portion of the site and has recommended that sensitive landscape treatment across the frontage, uh, be installed to help maintain the rural character of the area. Uh, and the, uh, historic resources and entrance quarter planner has reviewed the initial site plan for this proposal. Uh, just to go over some history of the property, it's, I think, useful to, to know that the property nineteen eighty nine, the planning commission did find that a transfer station was in compliance, uh, with the comprehensive plan. Um, that transfer station, a similar facility, actually is a, a little bit more intensive facility than this one. Uh, was found in compliance on parcel one twenty one ninety three, which is essentially the parcel across the street from the site. Uh, in February of that year, the Board of Supervisors upheld P C's finding um, upon appeal by adjacent property owners. In March of that year, the county engineer notified the planning director that those transfer station uh, would now be located essentially across the street from that original compliance review on this site, one twenty one eighty two A, uh, A two. Uh, the planning director at that time determined that no compliance review would be required. Um, the director informed the P C at that time of the determination and the P C occurred, concurred with that determination. The site was, uh, subsequently not developed. The staff report provides a little bit of background on that. I will get into that history, but if you have questions, uh, I or, um, the F E S, uh, staff can hopefully answer them those questions if you have questions about that history. Community meetings are required to be held for, uh, C C Ps and the one for this proposal was held on September thirtieth. Um, virtually, um, at that meeting, concerns were raised about the impact to adjacent properties, about impacts from noise, odor runoff and, um, the generation of rodent rodents to and from the site. Uh, traffic impacts to rural roads were expressed as a concern in the condition of Esmont Road, which serves the site, um, in the condition of it. Um, is also concerned and comments that the location of such a facility should be closer to population centers. There were, uh, write-in comments that were in support of the location um, and its location near to the King Keen Crossroads where the post office and store are located and that the location could be useful during trips and commutes to Charlottesville and Scottville, uh, combining those trips, uh, or drop off during those commutes. A few renderings, I think the applicant will probably have, uh, also for you, but this shows a general, um, layout or concept for the site. Uh, the containers around the perimeter are for recyclables, the compactors in red are for uh, cardboard and for, uh, the trash disposal collection. Uh, rendering of the entrance to the site. And in the site plan, in case we need to refer to it again, the applicant may have a better version. Uh, in terms of the compliance review from my presentation, I'm going to focus on just a couple of, uh, more, uh, relevant, um, recommendations of the conference of plan. Uh, here, the community facilities plan chapter, uh, has a objective to continue to provide for facilities and services in a fiscally, fiscally responsible and equitable manner. Uh, the nature of the public service delivery does, uh, orient and focus and encourage public facilities to be located in the development areas as opposed to rural areas. However, um, this guidance also recognizes that public facilities, um, as noted here in the highlighted bullet, public facilities are allowed in rural areas in cases where it's not possible uh, to be located in development area due to fiscal constraints, uh, or the nature of the facility, uh, and or the services being provided. The, uh, again, highlighted bullet recognizes the general desire to have facilities in the development area, but it does, um, allow for them to be located in the rural areas to provide for unique service needs. In this case, um, the goal of this facility uh, as reflected in the, uh, solid waste, uh, management uh, plan for the county is to provide for a level of rural service in outlining portions of the county. And consistent with that, um, fourth bullet, uh, alternative. In terms of, um, this strategy, which is to schedule, uh, funding of government facilities through the C I P based on needs identified that master plans, other chapters of the plan. And again, emphasis here, other documents, uh, county, uh, approved documents. Uh, we focus mostly here on the county's long range solid waste solutions advisory, uh, final report, which has been accepted and used as the county's plan for implementing solid waste management services, and that study contains the following recommendations to foster rural services and carefully plan and establish recycling, uh, locations in more distant areas of the county. Um, staff opinion is that just general location is convenient to rural residents and consistent with this recommended guidance, uh, from that final before. The applicant also may have this in his presentation. I'll touch on it briefly as it relates to the goals of the comp plan and, and this particular facility. Uh, this map outlines, uh, the existing and future service facilities for solid waste convenience centers, uh, noting Ivy Materials Utility Center. Um, and the McIntyre Recycling Facility in blue, which are existing facilities that along with the prevalence of private hauler service for trash and recycling, uh, pretty much adequately serve our urban areas at this point in time. Uh, the green, uh, uh, circles are the service areas for rural service centers, one to the south, this facility in the Keen area and a potential future facility in the twenty nine North Quarter. Uh, between those two future facilities and the existing facilities, most of the counties, uh, will provide, will have a level of, of public service provided to. Uh, in summary, um, this proposal is consistent with the community facilities section of the comprehensive plan and the long range solid waste solution advisory committee final report. The location in the rural area is consistent with the comp plan and community facilities object, objectives, which allow for location of rural facilities in the rural areas to address unique service needs, in this case, providing con- convenient service to rural area residents. And the location, uh, this general location near, uh, twenty in the Keen area provides a central location to serve Southern Albemarle County. Staff found no unfavorable factors as it relates to the proposal's consistency with the comp plan. And again, the Long Range Solid Waste Solutions Advisory Committee Final Report. Uh, staff recommends that the commission find the location character and extent of the Southern Albemarle Convenience Center, uh, public facility and public use, uh, thereof as proposed to be in substantial accord with the comprehensive plan. Again, for the reasons, uh, identified as favorable factors in the staff report in this presentation. And, uh, I have motions for you when needed.
Thank you, David.
Here, you want me to close the, uh, stop chair.
Would you please?
Yeah.
Are there questions for David right now before, or before we go to the applicants? Okay, man, uh, Rick.
David, um, just, uh, really a, a question here about the level of detail. I know we're, what our role is and what's before us this evening, but, um, to your knowledge, has there been any statistical analysis of how this center is going to operate as a regional facility? I E, a inter-county facility? If one looks at page five of the resident service area, you have drawn, or the applicant has drawn concentric circles out from Keen. And at ten miles, one sees that that incorporates a fairly significant swath of one magisterial district in Flavanna County. And then also includes the northern part of another, I think, two, um, magisterial districts in Buckingham County. Um, and thirdly, um, I'm basing this question on my statistical awareness that there are fair number of people who commute into Charlottesville, specifically University of Virginia Hospital and Martha Jefferson out of Buckingham County. That this facility, and they come up, by the way, Route twenty, this facility would be, um, welcome, I think, for some of those people, and I think that's terrific. I'm, I'm not deprecating the regional focus of this at all, but, uh, my first question is whether there was any kind of regional analysis, and then I have a couple of follow-up questions to that.
I think that's probably a question best, uh, answered by the, uh, F E S director and, and the, uh, applicant for this proposal. Um, so I, I'm not aware of that, um, and how they plan to provide for or restrict services from other localities. I think that's, they can answer that question for you.
David, uh, just as a follow-up, I appreciate you telling me that. As a follow-up, is that something that will be provided at the board level?
The, the statistical analysis?
Yeah, just, you know, about.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm not, I don't know that. I think that's something that could be provided. I think, again, I think, uh, Mr. Stewart from F E S, who's been working on the capital project and the funding with the board of supervisors, that information may have been provided. Um, but I don't know that.
Okay, I, I'll hold off on the, uh, even more specific questions till later. Thank you very much for your response.
Hmm.
Was there anyone else who had a question for our staff before we move to the?
Just a, an, a different question, David. Will there be provided any kind of analysis from a public safety standpoint on Route twenty and that in intersections with Coles, Rolling Road and, um, Prophet as well as, not Prophet, but, um, um, Esmont and Plank coming in at that intersection in terms of the occurrence of accidents at that intersection. Um, it's something I'm, I was well aware of in a previous role with a county. And I just would hope that, you know, as the board looks at this, that that kind of detailed information will also be available. I know it's not germane to us this evening. I'm just asking because I think it will be highly relevant for the board to evaluate it. Uh, and thereby make some recommendations that I would also like to make later this evening. Um, uh, as food for thought on this application going forward.
Yeah, we, uh, did receive, um, unfortunately, we didn't get it until, um, several days ago, I think, but there is a, uh, accident report that V D I T has generated for us. It does provide for a three-year period of time, the, the, the types and number of accidents that occurred both on Esmont Road and Plank Road. Uh, the general sense of the response, eh, or information provided, um, it does indicate that the accident rate is below what is typical for a rural road in Culpeper District. That's one of the ways that they measure it. And there's an accident rate per million vehicle miles traveled. It's sort of an abstract looking number, but the rating for both these roads is well below what that standard is. And it does cover specific accidents that occurred over that period of time. I believe it's six accidents on Plank Road and nine accidents on Esmont Road. Um, the majority of the accidents were caused by wet roads, fallen trees, deer and DUIs. Um, but that report is available and that, that can be extracted to, to look at. That's sort of a similar theme for both those roads. Uh, but that information is, um, again, nearly available to us, but upon a quick look at it, it does not identify any unique, um, troubles with this road that aren't typical of, of most rural area roadways, but that information certainly can be available to the board.
Okay, terrific. Well, I, I'll just note later that there will be additional traffic now uh, at this intersection as a result of this convenience center, which I support. Um, but I do think there is going to be a need for some steps taken to ensure that motor is slowed down coming, uh, on north and proceeding south on Scottsville Road, I E, Route twenty, um, to minimize any future accidents. I'd also note statistically, when you're measuring the Culpeper District, you factor in on rural roads, uh, a lot of roads, uh, that are even much more isolated and then roads that have much more traffic than this intersection up in the Culpeper and Warrenton area. But, you know, for us, one fatal accident at this intersection is one fatal accident too many. Um, so I do want to talk about that, um, when we swing back at the end after public comment and, uh, after other people on the commission have an opportunity to follow up with any other additional questions. Thank you, David, very much for that.
Thank you, Rick. Uh, anyone else before we go to? Please, would we invite the applicant in to speak, please, and give them the, the, uh, roadmap on amount of time they have? Lance, is that you? Are you there?
Um, yes, I'm not sure. I was, um, about, I thought I was about to be introduced. Um.
Well, how about you introduce yourself to us?
I'll, I'll do that. Um, thank you, Julian, for the direction. Um, Lance Stewart, I'm uh, Alamo County's Director of the Department of Facilities Environmental Services, and, and I've had the, the lead on this project, um, through, um, past, um, board discussions and, uh, and public discussions. Uh, and I'm glad to be here today. Thank you for my, um, ten minutes. Um, I'm going to share my screen. Um, and the computer tells me you can see my screen. So again, thank you for being, um, willing to entertain this project today. Um, with me today on the call, uh, for questions, if, if necessary, um, are Phil McCallops. He is with the Rubana Solid Waste Authority. He's the Director of Solid Waste. And would be responsible for management of this, uh, facility. Uh, and also, um, E. Campbell Bolton. Um, Campbell is a, the project manager with Draper Aiden Associates, the engineering firm, um, who's supporting us in this project. Uh, so what is a convenience center? I think that's a key question to, um, to answer. Um, it's a place to take um, fundamentally, uh, bagged or household trash. And we're talking here about bagged hassle, household trash. It's, as David said, it's not, not commercial, um, trash. And, and as we, uh, envisioned it, and as it's working at the I B, um, convenience center that was open last summer, uh, it would be a tag a bag program. You can see Sam on the right, um, is an average sized person in a thirty two gallon bag is, is, uh, basically an industrial sized, um, bag of trash. It would be, um, those would be tags would be available from local merchants for, uh, two dollars per bag and, and that is, um, considered cost convenient if, if you're nearby, uh, compared to, um, the average local hauler costs, um, for curbside collection. Of course, in the, um, rural parts of the county, um, uh, curbside access is hardly a guarantee. Um, I would say it's, it's more rare than it is common uh, for, for curbside hauler collection to be available. Um, and as we talked about solid waste and that, that there have been concerns expressed about, um, about odors or leakage, I just wanted to show you all a, um, an image of the, of the compactor uh, that would be purchased for this. Um, there is a, if you can see my, um, cursor, there's a, a feed chute in the front and, uh, but the compactor is entirely self-contained. Uh, it does not leak. Um, and, and again, we would not accept any commercial waste, and it really wouldn't fit in the chute uh, for the compactor. Um, and, and we, um, intend fully to, to make sure that this is removed at the end of every day that the facility is open um, to avoid any issues with, um, odor building. Um, and of course, um, you know, people who are more accustomed to the McIntyre Convenience Center think about recyclables first, and, you know, it, it is our, our mission as an organization to make sure that we divert as many materials from the landfill as possible. Um, so, uh, it will have a, a, a robust set of, um, of, of carefully streamed glass, plastics, paperboard, um, tin and other metals. Um, though, uh, we're lucky to have Rubana Solid Waste Authority, um, with us on this because they make sure that everything that they collect gets recycled, which is, um, With us on this because they make sure that everything that they collect gets recycled, which is very different than the situation with most other alternatives. And we also anticipate that as at Ivy, we may in the future off offer at this site special waste stream collection days. And that'd be really a question for the Rubana Solid Waste Authority Board to authorize in the the county and city to co-fund. Really, I want to focus on what a convenience center is other than what what its function is. And and effectively, it is a rural service and I and I'm. This is a map of surrounding counties. This was in the Long Range Solid Waste Solutions Advisory Committee Recommendation from 2015. I modified it slightly to make the convenience centers easier to see with the red stars. And also added the IV Convenience Center that was open last year. So this partially speaks to Mr. Randolph's question about neighbors using this. The convenience center, which would be approximately where my cursor is here. I expect some of them would on their way to work, but I I think you can see that they are not underserved. In in most counties, Green County does not have one and I believe. Flavanna has has just one. But you know, we can expect people to to cross our borders, just as our residents in in Southern Alamo have been. Crossing borders into other counties and to meet their own needs. And I pulled just today, actually, some information from 2020. Survey about my county residents conducted for us by the Weldon Cooper Center. Recall that there were specific questions about solid waste services in the county and recycling services. These are the responses broken out by by type of locality. So rural areas, small towns or villages, suburban areas or urban areas. Response to the question about the quality of solid waste services. And and this is an indication that. That folks in rural areas are less satisfied with their service. This is poor and dark red moving to green and excellent to give an indication of. Where people stand. And I'll say this is, I think, was among the other services that were covered in that survey. I believe this was ranked third worst. Similarly, this is same kind of same question, same format here, rural, small towns, suburban and urban. About satisfaction with the quality of recycling services being provided. And I think this indicates, you know, a gap in urban versus rural service levels that we're all aware of. But I think this also tells us that 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 gap is acknowledged and recognized by. Folks not in urban and suburban areas. And finally, because I I like graphs and charts. This was another question, asking people to rate how important it is to support and invest in recycling services. Again, the scale is green for positive, all the way to red. And you can see 79% of respondents in the rural areas. Said that it's either very important or important to invest in recycling services. Again, this doesn't reflect the 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 household trash portion of it. But again, I I think that. At least in terms of those who responded to this survey. That that the the feeling on this was pretty clear from individuals in the rural area. So Mr. Benish stole some of my thunder on the location of the site. I'll just say that it it is just six miles north of Scottsville. Near the post office is indicated. And at a at a crossroads, the Keen Crossroads, that that is will be very convenient to those people in the rural area that this is intended to serve. Mr. Benish also stole my map and I don't really have anything to add to that, except to say that, you know, if you. The these big circles are, you know, people who would access those who are who are willing to make the trip. I I think, you know, a tighter circle here is the folks who will be more likely to use it frequently. And if you go back really just a few more slides to take a look at this, I think you can see that the the density in some counties. Of these is is higher than than what my map shows. So our service levels still have some way to go, I believe, even under this scenario before. We meet the service levels provided by other counties around us. And I'll just point out a few things about the conceptual design. I will go into too much detail due to the limited time. Track track. This is, of course, Esmont Road. The post office is just up the road. There's two lanes of traffic. One is a bypass lane for people to to be able to access the the solid waste compactors here. Cardboard's compactors are very popular. This would be this this red one here. And these larger ones are for 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 metals and tin. That that really are, you know, quite large and are only pulled. Much less frequently than than other types of containers. Our intention, initial intention was to just do one compactor. But we do think that, given the rural nature of this area, it may be necessary to have two. And so our intention is to, if the funding is available, to to build out the entire entirety of the site. And stub out electrical conduit and and build a pad. And in the event that it's so popular that we we create traffic flow issues that if we need to bring another one, and they are quite expensive. But we're prepared for that eventuality and the the site plan submission. Did reflect what we think ultimate traffic counts would be. David also mentioned the hours of operation. I'll just. State and reinforce a couple of things. The the facility would be closed on Thursdays. That is intended to give the Rubana staff to come in. And pull the the recyclables containers that are that may have built up over time. This helps avoid problems with, you know, interacting with vehicles and large trucks at the same time. So other than the the daily trip that would be made by a truck to to pull the. The household waste container. The 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 truck traffic generated from this would all be on a day when there would be, it would be closed to other for other purposes. And I don't think, I didn't put a bullet here, but I'll mention that the the hours would be adjusted seasonally. There will be no site lighting. So that that will be a problem for. Others in the area who might be disturbed disturbed by light. And going back here on the same vein, we show a number of evergreen trees. There's of course a lot of forest, but they're all deciduous trees. So our intention, this is indicative, we actually will be looking very closely at. At adding more trees before the the final site plan is approved and is part of the project. All all around the the full facility. And this is a a privacy, you know, offense intended to keep. People from dumping illegally and from animal from from getting into the site. But there will be privacy screening on that to help. Cut down on the visual impact of the facility. And that is the conclusion of my presentation. I hope I made it under 10 minutes. And I'm happy at this time to stop sharing my screen and answer any questions that you may have or pass them on to Phil McAlips or Campbell Bolton. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions for for Lance, for Mr. Stewart at this time? Tim and then Tim, Rick and Karen.
I'm wondering, in light of some of the questions from the public that we've received. If there is going to be a well or water source on the site, if there's going to be any detention basin for washing down oil and. Gas that could accumulate on the paved surfaces as well as the. I think we all know the kind of difference juices that come from the compacted. Materials when they're when they're moved from that site to another. In that case, I'm referring to the trash, not the recycling.
I'm going to defer that question to Phil McAlips, who will be the the operator for the building. Phil?
So, hi, this is Phil McAlips with Rubana Solid Waste Authority. The compacters is Lance said are self-contained. So unlike other containers, maybe you're familiar with or trash trucks. That you've maybe driven, had the joy of driving behind. These actually do contain all the liquid material that. Is put into them. So when they're picked up, they don't leak until they get to the transfer station and are dumped out on the tipping floor. So we don't expect to see. What we call leachate draining out of these things. And if there are problems with an individual compactor, that's a maintenance issue and we'll attend to that immediately. For a variety of reasons. The second, as far as washwater, we've been operating the one at Ivy and at McIntyre for years and we really don't generate. A lot of washwater. We, if there's a incidental oil spill servicing. Actor because a hydraulic line breaks or something like that, we'll use an oil dry type material. And sweep that up and take it offsite for disposal. If we were to call in a washing company, we would contain the liquids. That doesn't mean that, you know, it's a it's going to be a paved parking area. So there will be some incidental vehicle drips, drops, things like that, as you have in any parking lot. And my understanding is is with the stormwater management, you know, that'll have a chance to infiltrate. And basically become biologically treated at the at the soil and not be a runoff issue. But it should be very incidental at any rate.
So thank you. Just as a follow up then, there would not be a a water source on site?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we would. We really want to avoid doing that for that very reason. We don't want to have a lot of. Water being used on site for any reason, because that creates wastewater to manage then later. The the restroom facilities for the staff will be serviced, portable toilets, as we've used elsewhere. We use it McIntyre as well. So yeah, we would not have. A water source on site.
Thank you.
I think this is probably a question for Philip as well. You, it looks like on the site, there's going to be source separation, glass, metal, et cetera. And are you going to do such source separation even if there is no national, local? Or international market for that material? My question is, you know. Are we on the site, if we have this source separation, but there's no market for it? Are we really helping educate the public as to what is, excuse me, what is recyclable and what is not? And are we therefore increasing the cost of operation by just having a separate? Facility for, let's say, glass. I'm going to pick on glass because I know in at McIntyre, there is. A company that utilizes the glass that is generated there. But in other localities surrounding us, all of that glass is going. Basically design crossroads and being landfilled. So it's a question of environmental education and credibility. If we set out a hopper for glass and yet there really isn't any recycling, are we really serving? An educational goal on the site?
So that was, since I've been Director of Solid Waste, that's been one of the important. Well, the most important safety is probably the most important thing that we're trying to 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 manage here. But with regard to site recycling is that we are. Been careful to collect those materials that are recyclable. So if you if you were familiar, a couple of years ago, we quit collecting three through seven plastics. Because those were good, we were collecting them. They were being bailed along with the one and two plastics sent to Raleigh, going through the sort facility. Being sorted out of the material we sent them and then basically landfilled. And we thought that that, as you just said, attacked our credibility. And we didn't want to be caught out or. Implying that all that material was being recycled. All the rest of the material we collect. We do recycle. I mean, there is some incidental loss. I will won't say that there isn't, you know, a bottle cap comes off. There's stuff that's lost, but I'm talking less than some portion of a percent of our material does not actually get recycled. Now, one thing, as far as we do, we collect all those different materials? And do they all go to different recycling receiving companies? No, right now, because of cost, our mixed paper, for instance, and our cardboard all go to the same. Facility south, Sunoco facility, paper mill, south of Richmond. But that's a convenience and we want to maintain that that opportunity cost. Of handling them separately because sometimes cardboard then becomes very valuable instead of being $80 a ton, it's $200 a ton. But we want to get that credit for doing that, for for providing that material at that cost. Even though it's going to the same place, they buy it at $200 a ton instead of $80 a ton because that's that's what they want as their raw material. So philosophically, I would like to continue to collect. To separate the source separated material as best as we can. Educate customers not to contaminate it. And then try and find the most lucrative markets that we can. But if there's. If we end up at a time where one of our products isn't recyclable. Then that'll be one of the first things we look at is to either find a different market or determine collecting it. Because then we're just disposing of it ourselves. Sorry for the long-winded answer.
Karen, please.
Yeah, I didn't. I didn't really ask many questions because I already participated in the community meeting. But I just wanted to note, you know, just for the public's benefit, I guess, that. You know, people from other counties are not going to be able to dispose of their trash at this facility unless they go and buy a sticker. And I also note that. There are ample opportunities to dispose of your trash in facilities in Buckingham and Nelson County. So there's no, it's sort of like, there's no reason to come up to our facility and dispose of your trash. The the other point that I'll make is it it would be. It I'll just say quickly, it would be nice if there were other ways to get the stickers since you're not going to be selling them on site. Besides mail order, you know, I've seen in other communities where they'll have them available at the local, you know, general stores, you know. If you're like me and you can't get your act together and you forget, you know, you can stop at one of the local stores and and get some stickers before you go to the facility. And I just for the planning commission, you know, just remember we're, it's fine to ask these questions, of course. But we're actually here tonight to find whether this use is in accordance with the comprehensive plan. We're not doing a site plan interview. So I mean, feel free to ask those questions, but that's not actually within our purview this evening. That's all I had.
Are there others? Thank you. We will that. Thank you for for that, Lance and for for Phil. At this point, since we don't have any many questions coming out of your presentation, we're going to go to the public hearing and hear from. Here whether or not we have individuals who wish to speak and if so, tend to queue them up and to get this part of our meeting going. Carolyn.
Right, right now. If there's anybody that would like to speak, please raise your hand. I have Rex Lindville. Rex, please state your name and address and if you're affiliated with a group or organization. And your three minutes starts when you start talking.
Thank you very much. Good evening. My name is Rex Lindville with the Piedmont Environmental Council. And I live in the Samuel Amillo District of Alamo County. I'd like like briefly share two thoughts that the PEC has regarding this proposed Southern Alamo Convenience Center. As you all know, it's a long-held and central tenant of the county's growth management policy. The location of new public facilities should be within the county's development area. That said, the staff report provides a compelling argument, this particular service falls into the category of public facilities. That may be allowed in the rural area due to the nature of the facility or the nature of the service being provided. I think it's important to point this out, merely to distinguish the posed use from other. merely to distinguish the posed use from other public services and infrastructure improvements that could become the camel's nose under the tent and lead to the provision of additional services outside the development area. More importantly, the proposed site is within the Southern Albemarle Rural Historic District and is proximal to thousands of acres of private land that has been permanently protected with conservation easements. If not done well, the facility could have a negative impact on the resources that were acknowledged as special and important in the historic district and that have been permanently protected by private county and statewide conservation agencies in the acceptance of those conservation easements. Specifically, the nomination for the Rural Historic District describes the region as, quote, physically characterized by its Piedmont landscape, including mountainous woodlands, rolling pastures and low-lying floodplains of the James River, the large farms, historic villages, and crossroads communities interspersed throughout. Vast panoramic vistas enabled by the region's extensive concentration of open space readily testified to the district's well-preserved rural landscape.
Lindville, are you still there?
Dealing and a Stuteville are all within the immediate vicinity of the proposed facility.
Mr. Lind, Mr. Lindville, this is, this is the chair. We, we missed you, we missed you, we missed about three seconds of your comments. We only, that's a bit of a Stuteville.
Thank you, sir. You, so you, you caught the, while the property itself does not contain a contributing structure, the undeveloped land does in fact add to the general character of the, of the district. Further, important resources contributing to the district such as Enos Gorthy Plain Dealing and a Stuteville are all within the immediate vicinity of the facility. We were surprised that the historic district was not mentioned in the staff report, although the staff did mention it in the presentation this evening, and believe that the county staff and this commission should give greater attention to the negative impact this facility could have on these important conservation resources and require the applicant to develop a mitigation plan to address those impacts. For example, the conceptual design and site plans show a cleared road running through the few conifers planted as a visual screen. This site and its surroundings deserve better. By formally acknowledging the potential impact of the facility on the historic district and the protected landscape as a factor unfavorable, it is our hope that the applicant would be required to provide a more robust screening and landscape management plan geared toward protection of the scenic and historic resources that make this part of Albemarle County such a special place that is worthy of national recognition and distinction. Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this time, I don't have anyone else with their hand raised.
Do we do, do we do our typical, like, sort of five-second, five-second rule?
Sure. If there's anybody else who would like to speak at this time, please raise your hand so that we can give you that opportunity. No, sir, nobody's raising their hand.
Thank you. Then we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to Lance. Is there anything that you'd like to add before we, before the commission has discussed this issue?
I'll, I'll just say that, that Mr. Lindville's comments are well noted and, and I look forward to reaching out to him to get some suggestions from him on that or taking any direction from the planning commission, of course, that, that he would like to make. And thank you all again for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Others? Yes, Karen.
Yes, thanks. I, I want to make a few comments on this, this particular proposal. In addition to the, the staff reasons for this being recommended to be found compliant with the comprehensive plan, I also want to note that the climate action plan that the county adopted recently also calls for a reduction in vehicle miles traveled. And so I think that for those of us who live, I live on the very, very tip of the county. I'm almost the most southernmost house in the county with one exception. There's one other resident that's more southern than me. And my drive to the Ivy Materials Center from where I live in the San Miller District is fifty-eight point five miles round trip. The, the distance, if I were to drive from my house to this new center is twenty-seven miles round trip. And if I were to combo that drive from my office, it'd be twelve point three miles round trip. So, I mean, I'm just one example, but one of the things I also want to note is that if you, we just heard from Mr. Lindville about the, you know, historic nature, and I think that the staff took that to heart and will do their best to provide adequate screening of this facility. It is only taking up a two-acre footprint of seven acres of wooded cover around it. But if you spend some time on that road, as I did today, and I often do because I live down there, as, as do other, another commissioner on this call, there is trash all along that road. And one of the things that we learned at the community meeting was the, you know, data that show reduction in roadside dumping and trash. People are more likely to avail themselves of this facility rather than dumping in the woods. And I honestly could pledge, I will personally do a trash cleanup along that road to help once that facility goes in. But I think that the, the damage to the, the look and feel of our historic district is much greater by all the dumping that we are experiencing in Southern Albemarle versus what will, it will look like once there is a clean and safe facility to take our trash to. I also will note that if you've been to the facilities in Nelson County, they are clean as a whistle, well-maintained. I think this facility will be like that. And the facility that is now currently operated for recycling at the Ivy Materials Center is also kept extremely neat and tidy. So, and I have to say much more so than the Charlottesville facility. So you know, we, we heard some of the comments about people's property values being damaged. I, I, you know, in the, in the public comments, but I don't believe that will be the case. I think this would be a well-run facility. It's in a convenient location. People can combo with trips to the post office. The roads are in pretty good shape for Southern Albemarle. You know, in terms of, if you really want to see some bad roads, I can point them out to you. But these roads leading to this facility are actually all in pretty good shape. We also heard in the public meeting about comments about bicyclists and people, bicyclists using that road and others. I can tell you that when I drive to the Ivy Center, I see at least five to eight bicyclists on the way coming and going. And I don't see any bicyclists around this facility. So, you know, it's like there are bicyclists riding our rural roads all across the county. That's a wonderful thing, but I don't think there's any greater impact of bicyclists in this location. And I do think that the people in Southern Albemarle deserve a place to take their trash. And I was, last thing I'll say is just that people also assume that there are lots of choices for trash pickup. And I can tell you in the San Miller District, there simply are not. We don't have the ability to have affordable trash pickup and you know, an almost sixty-mile round tip to, to take recycling is frankly, I think unacceptable to, to those of us who, who care about the environment. So I'll leave it at that, but I just wanted to kind of give you my, my perspective on this facility. Now, of course, it literally is on the line between my district and Rick's district. So you know, it, it, I think it serves both our districts equally well.
Thank you. Rick?
I would just note that most cyclists are not going to be using Esmont Road because of its twisting nature and the hills that are there with vehicles could be extremely dangerous. That most cyclists are, if they're going east-west into this corridor, they're coming across Plank Road. I will also note, as a cyclist, about ten days ago, on a Saturday, I was in the Tour de Green, which dipped down into northern, northwestern Albemarle County, Advance Mills, Dyke, that area. And the level of trash that I saw along the sides of the road was just really disappointing. I will say to Karen, I hope you're right, that having a convenience center is going to be the panacea, the kind of the silver bullet to clean up the disposal of trash along our roads. I'm, I'm going to express some skepticism that the convenience center alone is going to solve that problem. I know annually, if not biannually, VDOT has had to clean up Route Twenty, essentially just south of PBCC all the way down to Scottsville because of the, the quantity of trash that gets generated. And if you do a content analysis, you find the number one problem is we don't have a bottle bill in this state. And so beer cans, beer bottles, et cetera, all get disposed day and night along the road. And then the second major thing that I picked up on in, and ten days ago, was the amount of paper goods from fast food stores that just gets thrown out the door. So easy in the, in the window after you pay and then easy out the window after you've finished eating. So Karen, I hope you're right about it. Let's see in five years if Route Twenty is cleaner year-round as a result of having the convenience center there. I suspect it will improve somewhat, but I'm, I'm afraid unless we get to a point of really making people that use the roads aware that we're all in this together, that we need to share the roads being clean. That's the problem I have with, you know, the message to motorists is, you know, you're meant to yield to the cyclists. And the message in France is we're all in this together. So cyclists and motorists need to be aware of one another. Well, somehow or other, we've got to get to a notion of a collective responsibility, all of us together, to keep our road and highways as beautiful as they can be.
Tim, please. Tim, please.
I'm, I'm interested to hear what Rick is going to suggest, but just a couple of things. I'd like to respond to Mr. Lindville's point, because I think it's, it's well-taken. We have a number of rural historic districts. And as somebody who's been involved and authored, co-authored Bulletin on Rural Historic Districts that led to a lot of the guidelines that are used around the country today. Back in the eighties, there are a lot of things that, just as Black Lives Matter has shown us, that there are a lot of things that have been missed. There are a lot of things that were missed in rural historic districts that a lot of us hoped could start coming in and are now, we're taking a relook. So actually, the rural historic districts around the country and around the county are actually being looked at for additions for things that were omitted. But Mr. Lindville talked, when he talked about the land, he also talked about a number of things, and one of those were the crossroads communities. And I think that the, a crossroads community like this is the proper location for a facility like the convenience center. Rural historic districts and history tell us the story over time. And, you know, there's a newer facility of a post office, but it's a very significant component of that crossroads community. And I see this convenience center as serving an important element today for a number of functions, and it continues to tell that evolving story of that. And by doing that, it keeps it so that we're not having a really incompatible use along Route Twenty, where we do have the, the fields and the woods, wooded areas, and then all of a sudden a convenience center. This is much more logically in the location where it is. So I'm bringing this up because taking Karen's point, consistency with the comp plan, I think that this is actually consistent with the comp plan and the historic rural historic district component of that by being located where it is as opposed to out in the middle of nowhere. As we have, we all know, many of these convenience centers are in rural areas. So there will be eyes on the street, if you will, because of this. And I think that that's really important. Besides the fencing, the gate and the person servicing, it, it's, it's good to be where there are more activities occurring and it's proximity to the post office, I think is important. But there are certainly transportation issues that are outside of this consistency, and I'm hoping that Mr. Randolph is going to talk about some of those things at that very complicated, multi-road intersection that occurs not very far from the entrance to this.
Before we go back to you, Rick, is there anyone else before we go to Rick? Karen, do you want, Karen, do you want to go after it?
Tim, thank you for the lead out there. Appreciate it. I, I have talked with Supervisor Price about this issue, and certainly something I've thought about for a number of years because of the complaints from people living or, and, and working at the crossroads of Plank Road, Esmont and Route Twenty. But I do feel that VDOT is going to need to step up here by providing flashing lights, warning that this is a dangerous intersection. And we probably need to have equal warning, Dave Benish, from both Esmont Road and also Coles Rolling Road for people to be aware of what they're coming into at Route Twenty, given now our expectation that there should be more traffic accumulating immediately in that area as people utilize the convenience center. So I think that's the best we're going to be able to do. Probably in fifty years, there will be a traffic light at that intersection, but as Supervisor McKeel often says, at that point, probably all of us are going to be pushing up daisies and it'd be another planning commission to worry about. But I do feel, you know, we just need to be prudent and cautious and knowing that there's going to be increased traffic and people can be impatient, waiting in line. If in fact, lines do arise, Lance, on this facility, as people drop off trash and they're a little behind schedule to get to a meeting in Charlottesville, that they're going to want to speed up Twenty. So we need to do everything possible to just remind them to be cautious about that intersection. So that, that's all I have. I, I do think it is germane to the discussion. It's also a point that was brought up by several people who commented that they were opposed to this application.
Others? Karen?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a point to Mr. Randolph and others that I did not say that the Recycling and Trash Disposal Center would be a panacea for all trash on the roads of Albemarle County. I was citing the staff's presentation at the community meeting where they used actual studies that showed that the proximity of a recycling slash trash station was a predictor for reduced roadside garbage. So you can take that up with them if you'd like to see their studies. There's also multiple studies that have been done. I have the articles in my possession that talk about the fact that when people see trash, they're more likely to throw it. Done all kinds of interesting behavioral studies with picking up trash and then finding less trash was thrown as a result. So, you know, it's the broken window theory. I'm sure everyone has heard that who's involved with planning. If you have a broken window, you tend to have more broken windows. If you do the repairs, the cleanup, you tend not to have as many problems. So that's all out there. There's also articles on the fact that if you have pay-as-you-go trash, you also tend to have an uptick in recycling. So I sent, I sent Rick that article for his thrilling reading later on. But just to say that I'm, I'm actually, you know, prepared to make a motion. I don't know if you want to have more discussion about this. I mean, I wish we didn't have to dispose of trash, but we do and we don't have adequate facilities in the southern.
Karen, I want to pause for a second to see if any of our colleagues wish to say something at this time.
Absolutely.
Seeing no one jumping, jumping in there. Karen, do you, please go forward with what you suggested. Oh, thank you. There's the man, there's the man behind the shadow. Only the shadow knows.
He's a very efficient guy. All right. So I, I moved to find the location, character, extent of the Southern Albemarle Convenience Center CCP two zero two one zero 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 two. Public facility of public use that our office proposed to be in substantial accord with the comprehensive plan and the climate action plan.
Is there a second? Second in by Rick? Are there, is there any discussion? Ma'am, would you, Rick, are you coming on for discussion? I see you're unmuted yourself. No?
No, I was getting ready to go ahead and say aye.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ho, ho, hold your eye. Just hold your eyes. Carolyn, would you, would you please call a roll?
Yes. Mr. Bailey?
Hi.
Mr. Keller?
Hi.
Hi.
Ms. Firehawk?
Hi.
Mr. Randolph?
Yes.
Mr. Bivens?
Hi.
Ms. Claiborne?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So where is the there's David. So David and Lance, thank you very much that you heard from my commission on uh that we in fact in finding a substantial accord. And that uh, you know, I assume you got the the various bits of of advice and support that allow you to go forward with this plan as as and and hopefully not have it happen like in the in the nineties where we got, we had a yes. And then it didn't go anywhere. So let's hope it doesn't sit on sit on a in a file for another X period of years, but that we actually get a con- a convenience center down in that in that crossword, in that crossword area. I and I know this is a small thing, but seeing CCP, that just took me back to the Cold War. I don't really want to go back to a Cold War. I want to go forward. So if there's something other than CCP, and don't do it, Rick, Rick, don't don't do it, don't do it. Um, uh, that would be cool, but thank you for your time tonight. We'll we'll look forward to seeing you soon.
Thank you.
Okay. I knew it. I just knew it wasn't gonna happen. It was just like. Um, committee reports. Who has committee reports for today? No committee reports for today. Well, I will share the last, this is today's Tuesday, right? Uh, last night's um uh, Daniel, I Daniel, we didn't even get a chance to say hello to each other last night. Yeah. Um, we had a community action. We had a community meeting on a project that's it's actually going in your name. Why am I talking? You talk. It's going in your name. Where I don't like the name of the project and I'm going to figure out how to get that information to somebody. But then I'll 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 let Daniel sort of say something.
No, I mean, it it is fuzzy. It was in your CAC, you know, but in the Magisterio Rio District. But uh, it's a uh rezoning request is a community meeting for a rezoning request for uh roughly about eight acres, just under eight acres um in front of the rehab facility off of Rial Road. Uh, so just down from the uh garden spot, if you like to garden, uh going towards Almarl High School uh from from twenty-nine, uh just past the garden spot and uh before the Four Seasons neighborhood. There's uh uh I think about was it five parcels in total?
Yes, yes.
You have four parcels.
They bought four and they own one.
They owned one, so five in total. Um, it's no date has been set right now. Uh, the rezoning is to move from an R six to uh uh two hundred, up to two hundred and fifty townhome complex uh with a fifteen percent affordable housing proffer on the two hundred bonus, which would come in about thirty uh affordable housing units. It is a rental facility, not an owning uh for for uh purchase. Um, the they had some concept plans. Um, overall, I think uh it is in the development area. I think it's good to have housing like that. Uh, we'll 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 wait for it to kind of move through the system uh before before it is. But if you'd like to learn more about, I'm sure the staff would be willing to share any any additional uh uh of the assets that were provided for.
I I think it's probably going to be a little bit higher and because our our new um uh affordable housing policy, I think it's probably even higher on that. Um, my piece on it is I just wish it wasn't called the Heritage on Rial on Rial. That's that's the only thing that I I will ask staff to perhaps have a conversation that it doesn't need to be called the Heritage. Um, but other than that, you know, it's three stories and then four story um apartment buildings. I think there's sort of like five or s- six, six uh, six pods, six, six units. It'll be interesting to see how it moves through, but the nice thing about is you can walk to a whole host of things from there. And we're still going to still maintain some of the green area around it. Is that, yeah.
Yeah, I agree with that.
So that that's the only one that the two of us had together. And does anybody else have anything that they want to? Okay, old business. What you saw on your plan, there's we have some new business. That's the appointment of a planning commission member to the Charlottesville Abmarl Metropolitan Planning Organizations, Ranor River Bicycle Pedestrian Bridge Advisor Group for Smart Scale twenty twenty application process. Oh, and look who it is. Jessica, would you are you are you there because you want to tell us something?
Um, I'm I'm happy to expand on the memo that you guys received in your meeting materials or just answer questions, whatever you prefer.
Why don't you just give us the Jessica thumbnail?
So now I'm I'm Jessica from Abmarl County. Um, just to to clarify, for those of you who used to know me as Jessica from the TJPDC. Um, so.
Congratulations and welcome, welcome, wel- welcome to uh, welcome.
Jessica, Jessica joined us a few months ago. I think this is her first time she's had the opportunity to be uh before the commission here. So she is our principal planner, transportation, uh feeling Kevin McDermott shoes but from where he was promoted from. So she's handling all our capital projects, transportation planning, uh working with Dan Butch and Kevin, the transportation planning team.
And I think you and I think you heard the conversation about the the crosswords tonight. I think I saw you there. Did I not? So you heard Mr. Randolph's conversation about uh managing traffic in that area at some point?
I did, and I will I will pass things along. Yes.
So well, what will duly welcome on behalf of the committee to your first presentation on this side of the coin and this side of the realm. And yes, we'd like to hear a little bit about that, then please.
Great. So um, as you know, from the memo in your packet, I'm here to request that you guys appoint one of your members to um a stakeholder advisory committee looking at a potential project of the Rivanna River Bike and Pedestrian Bridge. And this is a bridge to connect um a a multimodal connection between the Bullen Mills area and the Pantaps area. So the reason we're making this request is because actually the Charlottesville Abmarl MPO has um created a new process for their smart scale applications. Um, they have worked with their committees, including their policy board um to identify four projects that they want to submit for round five of Smart Scale, which will be um in twenty twenty-two. Um, of those four projects that they've already chosen, one of those is the Rivanna River Bike and Pedestrian Bridge. So this is, like I said, a needed multimodal connection. It's been identified in a couple of different plans, including the Pantaps Master Plan. Um, just to give you a little bit more background, VDOT has been involved in this uh project for a little while. Um, they hired consultants and those consultants have identified two potential alignments for the bridge. Um, one just a little bit further north going from city to county and another one further south going from actually county to county. Um, a member of one of the TJPDC's committees also identified a third alignment. So um, this project has had a little bit of public engagement through the TJPDC. But as part of before they feel ready, before the MPO feels ready to submit the project as a smart scale application, they'd like to do additional public engagement, um including many stakeholders from both the county and the city. Um, this committee, and I'm going to quote from Sandy Shackelford from the MPO, the purpose of the committee would be to evaluate and prioritize a number of factors that need to be considered as the alignment is determined. And additional design considerations are discussed to inform the final application. Um, whoever joins this committee will be joining representatives from the Charlottesville Planning Commission from the Pantap CAC as well as um staff from Charlottesville and Abmarl um from our community development and also from Parks and Rec, among others. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Are there any questions for Jessica? So so Jessica, let me ask a question. Uh, he's going to wiggle now when I say this. How much of this would uh does it line up with the Citizens Transportation Advisory Committee liaison? But looking smile, he know, he knows where I'm going with this over here right now, but I.
Great, great question. I believe that they were expecting that that would be a separate individual. So you'd have one person who's a C-TAC liaison, and then you'd have someone from uh the Planning Commission.
Would the C-TAC liaison also be included?
They would be included in the Stakeholder Advisory Group, yes.
Okay. Do you hear that, Ben?
So Daniel has two opportunities to potentially join this committee.
Oh, does he? Oh, okay. Um, and let me ask a question about the other one about the uh MPO tech. How, what's their, having served on that, now Tim serves on that, what's how will they be engaged in this conversation?
Um, let me pull up a document while I'm talking to you. I don't believe that they have a representative on this stakeholder committee, although they will be like the entire um Citizens Transportation Advisory Committee, they'll be informed of how this process is going um throughout. So uh, one thing that I neglected to mention is that this committee will meet monthly um under the direction of the MPO. And they will meet monthly starting in November and going all the way up until pre-applications are submitted um in April. I believe I I wrote that incorrectly in your memo. I said May, but it's actually one month shorter. The the pre-apps will be submitted in April.
Thank you. Uh, discussion, folks. Tim, please.
Well, first, welcome, Jessica. I think it's our game that you're with Abmarl County. So it's it's great to see you in this in this view. Um, my sense is that there's been, and and Daniel, correct me if I'm wrong, about how much involvement there's been from the C-TAC, but um the MPO tech had a great deal of involvement in suggesting it would be on a committee and um and certainly in reviewing Smart Scale. So I guess because we don't want, Jessica, you might be seeing it from a different perspective than us, but we like to double up wherever we can double up because it means that we have people who have the knowledge and they can well, we have less meetings that have we have to go to because we have, I guess Charles could tell you how many meetings we have, um representations, but it must be over a dozen. So I would suggest that we a- appoint in the next year, because there will be some changes on the commission. I, for one, will not be there. Um, and I'm MPO tech now, that either that or C-TAC be doubled up, that that individual, one of those two individuals does this as well. I think that there would be a a time in energy savings.
I I agree with that sentiment. Uh, we we have spoken about on C-TAC a a couple times uh here and um, most recently putting together who reach out, uh one one admission that what was on it that we we added, uh suggested was the, you know, uh Ri- Ri- Ravenna Trail Group was was not in, was not on the original list. And so I I'm 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 with you. I'm uh, I don't say indifferent uh, Mr. Keller, but I I'm I'm always happy to take less meetings, given my busy meeting schedule. But hap- happy to serve because I think it does make sense for for either NPO tech or C-TAC liaison to to sit on this uh commission, but I don't want to, unless someone else within the commission is jumping up and down to be representative. I'll I'll let let you speak now.
Who would like to jump up and down? Uh, Corey's like in this frozen mode. It's like, he's like gone into broad broadband freeze there. It's like, I'm not moving. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna shift on this one. Nobody's gonna confuse my movement for a nod, Rick. Yes.
Corey has two reasons.
Oh, correct. Yeah. All right. Well, we just had our colleague um with all of the secret spy maps stepped forward so that that would probably be helpful for him to look at, be able to sort of cast one of his satellites over the Rivanna to see if this is really working, right?
Can do that. If you want a satellite test, I'll push a button right here. We'll have the picture tomorrow.
See, look, see, 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 see? I'm telling you, it's it's incredible the sort of the expertise we have on our commission. It's amazing. Um, so well, then I guess it's my role, counselor. I can I can close the nominations, can I? Okay, I uh everyone sort of, I draw up the vote, do we have to have a vote for closing the nomination? Is there, uh, can I have a, I'm moving it. So can I have a second there to close?
They're moved.
Some move, some move by Karen. Is there any discussion? Can we vote quickly on this bottom on just closing the nomination? Then we will close to, no, sir, I see you about to say something.
Yes, Mr. Bivens, if you'd like to combine your motion into both the motion to close nominations and a uh nomination uh to to make the election, you can make a combined motion and take care of it in a single vote.
Thank you, counselor. Thank you for for helping us to uh get out of here before eight o'clock. Um, I would, I I would make that that adjustment and Karen, would you? Karen, would you uh do that? Would you accept that second?
I accept your amendment to yourself.
Fine.
As as long as you could clarify who that who the nominee is.
The nominee is Daniel Bailey, Commissioner Daniel Bailey from the Rio District. Would you call it, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Keller?
Hi.
Ms. Firehawk?
Aye, aye.
Mr. Randolph?
Hi.
Mr. Bivens?
Hi, please.
Mr. Claiborne?
Hi.
And Mr. Bailey?
I have to vote for myself? Uh, yes.
We we would like you to. You don't have to. You could abstain, but we would prefer that you voted in the affirmative. So thank you. Thank you, that carried. Daniel, thank you for doing this and um it'll be I think this will, having you there will be helpful for all of us and also helpful for for this project. So thank you for agreeing to do that. Um, and Jessica, is that what you mean? Good. She's smiling. She said, oh, that was nice. I could, I could, I I get to come and I get to get things. Um, I get to come, I get to lose pieces of paper. This is the one thing I do miss about, I miss about being able to give you all a hard time. But I'm working in a space that's like this big, so I have like I'm constantly throwing pieces of paper on the floor and picking pieces of paper up. And I lose them all the time as you as as you can attest to. Uh.
So, Mr. Chair, we also need to get an appointment for the uh CIP Advisory Committee. Uh, Miss Firehawk.
Yes, we can CIP Advisory Committee.
Has been doing that, but I think we're about ready to start planning our CIP budget process in the next few months. And I've been asked to identify.
A person for that. And that's so that's going to run out of our normal assignments, which we typically do in January. That's like one of the first things we do in January.
It seems like it came early, but uh the request has been made and they're eagerly awaiting a designee.
Because right now, Ca- we have Karen Firehawk as our designee. So we need a new one?
I just wasn't sure since it's going to continue on. Uh, I know.
We don't, yeah, but many of us don't know that. We've got, we've got a bunch of people who haven't been re-selected yet or made decisions on if they're going to be re-selected.
True.
Well, if if anyone wants to know, um, I I did apply to be reappointed because I actually got weirdly excited about the comprehensive plan update and the zoning change update. So I that just shows I'm truly a nerd. Um, but the other thing to know is that the supervisor for whom I would be serving is running unopposed. So it would be very strange if he lost the election running all by himself. So, uh, you know, if I'm reappointed, I would be happy to continue on the CIP. I I also strangely enjoy that. I I find it a lot of fun. Um, but if someone else wants it, then someone else would like to talk about the CIP and balancing all the competing demands. Um, I also am happy to relinquish that.
Okay. Do we have anyone who would like to uh throw their his or her hat, since Jenny's not here? His hat into the ring on the CIP? Hmm, everybody closed their eyes and deep links.
Been there, done that.
Then counsel, I think I might allow to close the nomination and move forward, Ms. Firehawk for the CIP.
I would suggest a combined motion as was done with the prior committee today.
I would like to move that we close the nomination and that we move forward with Karen Firehawk as our as our nominee. As our nominee and appointment to, as our appointment to the um CIP Advisor Committee. Is there, is there a um? Was there a second? Second by Rick. Is there any further discussion? Madam, would you call the roll on this one?
Yes, Mr. Claiborne?
Hi.
Mr. Bivens?
Hi.
Mr. Randolph?
Hi.
Ms. Firehawk?
Hi.
Mr. Keller?
Hi.
Mr. Bailey?
Hi.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Firehawk, for for continuing that role and for running unopposed. Uh.
I didn't, I didn't say no one else wanted to be the San Miller Planning District Commissioner. I have no knowledge of that. There may be thousands clamoring for this job.
Thousands out there, Charles, do you have anything to tell us about any of the various meetings that we did not attend?
Uh, we had October 6th, uh, there was a work session with the board on the comprehensive plan. Uh, to try and wrap up that draft scope and we will be back with the board, uh, in early. November, uh, to talk about our engagement plan and then, uh, working with Ms Falkenstein to come back to this PC. And give y'all an update, uh, and also get some feedback on some of your thoughts and ideas. On the zoning ordinance updates, comp plan, and just kind of have an opportunity to, to share some thoughts, uh, and give some guidance and, and ideas. Uh, the sixth, we also had a public hearing for the zoning map amendment for Breezy Hill, which was approved by the board supervisors. And then we had a, uh, another work session just last Wednesday on the Rio Road Corridor Study, uh, also managed by Mr Benish. Uh, and our consult team, uh, with Lime Plus Gray. And a few other county staff members and we will be bringing some of that information as we continue making progress on that back this commission for some feedback as well from y'all. Plenty of stuff coming, uh, and I believe we have a few weeks off and then we'll be back here, uh, in November.
So I think we're, we are due to see each other after the night on, in this format, on November the 9th. And so, uh, remember, election day is November the 2nd, but I know, yes, but Tim, please.
Uh, just a question, question for Charles, do we have any sense of the December meetings at this point?
Our November meetings?
December, yeah, in November, uh, as of now, we have a couple of public hearings, uh, in the, on November 9th. And we have a work session on the, uh, CIP, uh, with, uh, Andy Benman from the Office of Management and Budget. Uh, he's asked for some time with the commission to talk about projects in our CIP process. And then we don't have anything scheduled yet for the second week, uh, November 23rd. But I know we have quite a few applications in the system, so I wouldn't be surprised if something popped up.
And December?
December, let me see, uh, December's pretty light so far, we do have a public hearing for, uh, a special use permit. For December 7th meeting, but that's all we have full now.
Thank you.
As your travel plans or your time away from our Zoom gatherings arise, if you would just sell, send that information to Charles and to. Me, that would be helpful, appreciate it.
Do that.
And Carolyn, so Carolyn, Charles and me could be very helpful, anything else for the good of the cause? Now you voted, and if you haven't voted, now you're going to vote, um, and until then, uh, stay safe. And, uh, I'll, at some point, I want to hear who got, who got, who's gotten their, their second or their. Their third doses, or if you're like me, a J and J person, a second dose. Perhaps when we come back together, I'd just like to hear how that's all going, that's my, that's my push, that you should go get them, okay. In any event, have a good night and see you in a couple of weeks, folks, bye bye.
Bye.
There we go. Hey bud.
Hiccups, but we made it through.
You know, it's okay. I, I, I have this set of like.